Good evening, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of April 11th, 2011. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Well, the Secretary, please call roll.
Commissioner Ferris?
Here.
Commissioner Price?
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds?
Here.
Commissioner Turpale?
Here.
Chair Fisher?
Here.
Public comments, I don't have any speaker cards under public comments, I do have one for our one and only case tonight. Written comments, announcements, continuances, Mr. Town.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we do have a supplemental packet for this evening's meeting, which includes a copy of a city ordinance, which was referenced in the staff report, and that is ordinance 1503 NS, and so that was provided to all of the commissioners this afternoon. That's all I had at this time, thank you.
The Secretary, please call case 6A.
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider agenda items 6A regarding case LU 2010-70131 and Z 2011-70038. Applicant 1200 Newberry LLC. Request, 1. Consider addendum to adopted mitigated negative declaration number 257. 2. Amend land use element designation from commercial and mobile home exclusive to medium density residential. And 3. Change zoning from TPD Trailer Park Development and C2 Highway and Arterial Commercial to RPD 15U Residential Plan Development up to 15 dwellings per acre. Location 1200 Newberry Road.
Good evening, Mr. Specter. All yours.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. Tonight, we're here to consider an amendment to the land use element of the general plan and to zoning for the property at 1200 Newberry Road. The, as far as the land use element, this change would affect two designations. The mobile home park that's located on this property, Canio Mobile Home Park, is designated mobile home exclusive on the land use element, and the frontage is designated commercial. And the change would be to take the entire property and designate it as medium density residential, excuse me, which allows up to 15 dwellings per net acre. In addition to the general plan change, this would change the zoning for the property from Trailer Park Development and Highway and Arterial Commercial to Residential Plan Development up to 15 dwellings per acre. This is an aerial view of the property. It's apparent that the southern portion of the property contains the mobile home park, Canio Mobile Home Park. The northern, slightly less than an acre of this property, as I said before, is a commercial general plan land use element designation and C2 Highway and Arterial Commercial zoning. And this is an area that's adjacent to Newberry Road at the entrance of the mobile home park. The southern 3.4 acres is the area containing the mobile home park. It's designated mobile home exclusive. It has trailer park development zoning and, well, mention the mobile home park in a minute. This park has been the subject of quite a bit of controversy in the past, and the result has been that the park has been approved for closure, and the tenants that are in the park today are scheduled to remain there through the end of June of this year. A number of tenants have already moved, but the majority will remain till June 30th. I should point out that when this closure was authorized by the city council back a little more than a year ago, there was a condition of approval that required that the tenants of the park receive relocation assistance before the park is converted to another use. And I understand that arrangements or agreements have been made with the tenants prior to their, or dealing with the time that they move and the assistance that they receive. This is a map of the general plan land use element, showing you the general pattern of the surrounding areas. It's residential to the south. We have another mobile home, Elms Plaza, to the west. And to the east, we have commercial. This is a map of the zoning designations of the property, the two designations for the parcel in question. As a matter of history for this site, and the general plan was originally adopted by the city council, the property, the entire property, had a commercial general plan land use designation. And then in 2008, the designation was changed actually two times. The initial change occurred when the property was designated high density residential, up to 30 units per acre, and the purpose of which was to encourage future development if the park was going to close for multiple family housing. Then there was a citizens group that gathered signatures for a ballot initiative, which was ultimately adopted by the city council, and that changed the general plan designations to what we have today, mobile home exclusive and commercial. The zoning for this property did not change. Before 2008, it was C2 and Trailer Park Development. Now, as far as the change that went from commercial to high density residential, I'll just mention, this was considered in the comparable zoning because it would help the city meets its RENA obligation that's identified in the city's housing element. This is a regional housing needs assessment obligation that all cities have, not the same amounts, but all cities have it. And it's basically an obligation that's specified in state law. Now, the applicant at this time is asking for a medium density designation because he believes that that medium density housing, specifically townhomes, is the best use for the site. And we had some discussions early on with the applicant about possible use of the property for high density housing or commercial uses, and the applicant believes that those uses are not feasible at this time. Now, as far as what the proposal, the proposal that's for us tonight, staff believes that it's a reasonable proposal because we have similar uses in terms of density to the west, east, and south of the property. There's already a sound wall along the freeway that protects the future residents from noise. We have mature landscaping adjacent to that sound wall, and the use in density is compatible with existing townhomes that can be found to the south. Another issue that's of interest with this change has to do with Measure E. Measure E is an initiative that was passed in 1996 by the voters of the city, and what it did was it placed a constraint on changes to the general plan. And that constraint says that any changes that exceed the residential capacity that existed when that initiative passed on November 6, 1996, must be ratified by the voters. However, there've been a number of changes that have been approved since 1996 to the land use element of the general plan, and those changes have lowered the citywide dwelling unit capacity. So that left us with an existing credit of 391 dwellings. Now, as a matter of the accounting that we applied to this, we have kept 114 of those 391 units in reserve for Elms Plaza Mobile Home Park. This particular change with respect to Measure E will increase the citywide residential capacity by 64 units, and that's basically 15 units per acre times 4.28 acres. So the cumulative residential capacity of the general plan will not exceed the capacity that existed in 1996, and therefore a vote under Measure E is not required. We also did some environmental review pertaining to this case, and we determined that an addendum to the mitigated negative declaration that was previously adopted, number 257, would be appropriate. 257 was done, excuse me, was prepared at the time that the general plan was changed to high density. So staffs recommending that the planning commission recommend that the city council approve the addendum to the mitigated negative declaration, which isn't on the slide, I'm sorry, and approve the amendment to the general plan to medium density residential, and approve the zone change to residential plan development up to 15 units per acre. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer questions that you might have.
Questions of staff. Commissioner Ferris.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Specter, I have a few questions on this. The, you mentioned the regional housing needs assessment. Would the homes that are in the mobile parks, does that count toward our housing needs assessment?
No, it doesn't.
Not at all?
Not at all.
So we're in a, are we in a situation with respect to planning that we have little incentive to keep mobile home parks in the city?
One of the really separate issues, because the RENA is intended to encourage cities to rezone property at higher densities, but it's silent as to existing mobile home parks or existing housing. They just don't count. The existing units don't count.
I guess in some ways that is the question I'm asking, is it seems to me that there might be an incentive for us to take things that don't count and increase the density on them to make them count toward the RENA. And maybe, maybe there's nothing we can do about that, but I appreciate you clarifying my understanding on that. With respect to, you mentioned that the Elms Plaza Mobile Home Park, that those units are held in reserve. Can you describe what that means?
Well, part of the Mobile Home Park initiative was to rezone that property, which was, along with Canio Mobile Home Park, was rezoned to high density housing. So when that was redesignated, if you will, to mobile home exclusive, we thought the appropriate accounting practice was to have something that that property could revert to in the case, in the event of a closure, because we couldn't have a situation where a property owner has no choices.
I guess, what does it mean, though, to be in reserve? There's 114, does it mean that there are 114 units more that can be, that can be approved without going to the vote of the people, or that there's 114 less?
Well, there's 114 less than the 391.
Okay.
Or 327 after this change.
So of the three, if this changes of the 327, there's 114 that are really kind of off limits.
That's the way we think would be a proper accounting of this.
Okay.
But there could be other approaches.
Okay, and that helps me out. I did have one question on the MND that was presented, which is, I believe, the original one that was approved. I go to page 33 of the staff report, under the section Population and Housing, section C. It looks into the assessment of the zone change back prior to there being an actual closing of the mobile home park and prior to any ordinance change. Is there anything that needs to be changed in the evaluation there? Because it seems to be an analysis based upon the previous situation.
You're talking about just displacing existing housing?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, maybe the impact is, would be no impact if, at the point that the park is empty, but there's still mobile homes in the park. So it's, it's not a significant difference today than it was then as far as displacement.
Is there anything we need to do to the document, or is that just part of, part of what we're here?
I don't think so.
Okay. Yes, one last question might be potentially for the city attorney with respect to the ordinance that took on the general plan designations and zoning changes. It also talks about that any designation, it seemed to me in reading the ordinance that the intent of it was to ensure that they stay those designations unless, if there's a closure, that there are payments that are made to the tenants. And I don't know, there is a little bit that was referred to in the staff report, but I don't really know much about the history. I guess the question would be, why isn't this being recommended and evaluated with respect to going to a vote of the people like it was with Measure E? Or at least an analysis of that.
Well, in this case, because of the closure that was approved by council last year, one of the conditions in that approval was that they need to pay the relocation costs for those who will be displaced, which will be everybody eventually. The way the ordinance reads and the way the condition reads is they are not allowed to change their use unless those mitigation measures are paid. The way the ordinance reads is if that happens, if everyone is paid, then you don't need to go to a vote of the people. And so, one thing, one condition or one recommendation for this project, especially at the council level here, is just an advisory to council, would be that it wouldn't become effective until all of those payments are made. My understanding is that most of those have already occurred. There may be a few, but as staff, we would want to make sure that everyone has been paid before those changes, assuming council votes affirmative occurs. Hope that answers your question?
I believe so. I guess this is a recommendation, obviously, so the whole thing goes to council, but they will receive that information about this at the time that they would choose to enact it?
Correct.
Okay. All right, thanks. That's all I have for now.
Other questions? I have just one, Mr. Specter. Going back to the Planning Commission meeting when we discussed this particular project, it was, if I remember right, it was portrayed that, yes, we're losing, you know, these mobile home residences, but we're gaining a high density project. And now the recommendation is that it's medium density based on the applicant's view of the project and whether or not it's financially viable. Do you agree with that? Well, obviously you do, but was any research done into what the viability would be of a higher density project?
Well, it's really just anecdotal that we've had discussions with a number of potential developers of multiple family housing, not necessarily on this site, but I know there've been discussions with others. And they've, without, I'm not aware of anyone has indicated that the market is such that it's viable to build the higher density housing at this time, multiple, you know, rental apartments at this time. I guess that's just the way the market happens to be today. Maybe a number of years ago it was better, and maybe, you know, 10 years from now, it might be different, but that's, that's the situation. We have property owners that have high density zoning and developers that have built apartments, but they choose not to because the economics aren't there, the cost versus the return is just not there for them.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Turpale?
Good evening, Mr. Specter. I had a couple of questions based on what you were just saying, and if I understand it correctly, the, in dealing with the HDR, the high density residential, we still have other areas within the city that potentially we'd be able to meet our RENA requirements with the state, is that correct?
We have a property in mind to help us meet those requirements. Back at the time that this property was zoned high density residential, shortly thereafter, we rezoned a number of other properties. We still have a shortfall, but we have a property in mind that's on Canio Center Drive that the city owns.
And I imagine staff, that's a balancing act, taking a look at what's going on in the city to make that happen.
Yeah, this really is a balancing act.
The only other question I have is, we've been talking about the mobile home park, but, and in the packet, it talks about Acre's Tavern. This is going to be a part of the zoning change as well?
Yes.
Okay. That's it.
Other questions? Commissioner Reynolds?
So what happens if we change the zoning for Acre's Tavern, what happens to that property? I mean, can they maintain?
Well, we can refer this to the applicant, but all along, my understanding was that when the time comes, that the tavern would, would close when the property redevelops.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I don't have any public speaker cards, so we'll go ahead to the applicant, Joe Bednar. Mr. Bednar, please state your name, city of residence, and you'll have 15 minutes.
Hi, my name is Joseph Bednar. I reside in Agour Hills, California. Good evening, Commissioners, City Attorney, Planning Director, Vice Chair Reynolds, Chair Fisher. I agree with staff and the recommendations and the review that we've just went through. I'd like to make myself available for questions, but there isn't a whole lot for me to discuss. It's pretty much in the report, and I agree with all of the recommendations, and I'm ready to go forward with this project.
Questions of the applicant? Commissioner Ferris?
Thank you. As I had some questions about the mobile home ordinance that we had referred to, there's a condition here that if, that any change would have to go and be approved by the voters unless payments in accordance with the ordinance is made with the tenants. Is it my assumption that that's your intention to fulfill the requirements of the ordinance so that it does not go to the vote of the people?
That is definitely my intentions, and we're well underway of taking care of all of those payments. It's going very, very well.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Bednar.
You're welcome, thank you.
Let's go back to staff for any additional comments?
I have no other comments, thank you.
Okay, we did receive one letter from Janet Wall recommending that we postpone this decision until the park closes on June 30th. No other correspondence. Any questions of staff? Okay, close the public hearing or go back to Mr. Bednar? You do have an opportunity for rebuttal as part of the process. I'm assuming nothing else. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, close the public hearing, open mission comments and/or motion. Commissioner Reynolds.
I was waiting for one of the new commissioners, if you'd rather start. Okay, no, go ahead.
Go ahead.
This has really been a difficult case, even though I did vote for the closure, I, the thought of displacing people, but I really believe in personal property rights and that this property owner does have the right to do this. I was hoping, though, that when it would be rezoned, that some of the people that did live in the mobile home on this site would be able to live in apartments or in high-density housing on this site, and I don't see that happening. As I said, I really would prefer the high-density, but this is just a recommendation to the city council. And with that, I will move approval, or a recommendation to the city council of LU 2010-70131, and the zone change Z 2011-70038, with the addendum to the MND 257, and with the findings and evaluation as stated in the packet.
Comments to the motion? Commissioner Price?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I watched with great interest all of the proceedings in regards to this property, and I, I think, I, I share similar sentiments. Nobody likes to see people displaced. However, the owner of the property does have certain rights, and he is meeting his obligations under the law that was enacted here in 2008. And while I too would, would, would like to see this, get some affordable housing units out of that property, that, that doesn't seem to be the way that the developer wants to go, so, under this economic climate. So I would be in support of the motion as well.
Commissioner Ferris.
Thank you. Actually, I was wondering if Vice Chair Reynolds would be kind enough to consider an amendment to it, which would also be a recommendation that no approval of this general, general plan or zoning amendment take place until verification that a payment schedule has been made to the tenants in accordance with the ordinance. Otherwise, that it goes to a vote of the people.
I think that's already in the ordinance, and our city council has to follow that unless Mr.
That type of amendment would be appropriate.
Pardon?
That type of amendment would be appropriate.
Okay, then I will accept it as a friendly amendment.
Thank you. And with that inclusion, I will support it, given the stated intentions of the applicant, and it will have followed the intention of the ordinance. Thanks.
Commissioner Turpil.
Yeah, I wanted to say the, of course, all these things are, are difficult to go through, but I think the, the applicant has showed extremely good faith, and I too believe in personal property rights. And I always believe, you know, although change is hard sometimes, I think it's very good for the city as we move into the 21st century to, to take some of these areas and do some different things with them. So I'm in support of the motion as well.
Great. I am as well with the amendment. I think that's a great idea to add this as a recommendation to the council. So with that, vote please.
Motion passed, 5-0.
Since this is a recommendation to the city council, there is no appeal period. Item 7, Community Development Department Reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to bring to the commission's attention, on page 75 of your packet is the tentative hearing agenda schedule. We do have two cases, one, one CIP review case that will be coming before you on May 9th, so we will not be meeting on April 25th, but do keep May 9th on your calendars, please.
A minutes of March 28th. Commissioner Reynolds.
I move approval of the minutes of March 28, 2011.
Vote please.
Motion passed, 5-0.
AB 1234 reports. No reports. Commission comments? Commissioner Ferris?
Yeah, even though we did come to unanimity on the previous case regarding the mobile home parks, I just, I, I do have a concern about the long-term potential effects of these. The ordinance did, at least in my, my mind in reading it, and what it seemed to intend to do was to try to really preserve the presence of mobile home parks and allowing for some means of affordable housing for these residents in the city. And I would not want to see this particular case become the model by which other property owners start to close down parks and seek to updevelop them. I don't know what we can do beyond that except to potentially just raise the issue and, and make it something that we ought to, ought to heighten our awareness to. Any thoughts on, on your?
Any other comments? Commissioner Price?
Well, I, I certainly wouldn't disagree with that. I think that it is clearly a more affordable housing option for many families here. But again, as in this case, the property rights of that owner, I think, are important to, to recognize as well. But I, I am in agreement that I certainly don't want to see any of the other mobile home parks closing, and to the extent that we can dissuade them from doing so. I, I think that as a city, that's probably a good practice.
Commissioner Turpil.
Yeah, Commissioner Ferris, I, you know, I understand those comments well, but I think that's what's interesting or what's nice about the city that we live in and why those ordinance were put in place. Because any change that's going to happen in the future, and correct me if I'm wrong, a city attorney, that it has to come before us and then go to the council. So all those checks and balances are there to make sure that the, the process is followed through. Those are my comments.
Commissioner Reynolds.
And I also agree. I would hate to lose any of the housing, but I, you know, this last year's been a difficult year because we had, let's say, the Valacito in with him wanting to, the owner of the property sell it to the people that had their coaches on the property. And also with the closing of this and the rent increases, I think that the mobile home people have really been hit hard. And it's the seniors in our community, and while we're, I think, good to our seniors, we have to always put them, and I'm one of them now, so we always have to put them in the forefront, that we have to provide housing. And I know there weren't only seniors in this park, there were families too, that I think we have to keep in mind that we have to do what we can to keep our mobile home parks.
And I agree with all the comments made. We are in very tough times, and anything we can do to preserve what we have now with the remaining mobile home parks is going to be very important, so it's good to keep on our radar. So with that, we will adjourn to 6:30 PM on May 9th, 2011.